Now start this work session in session.
Okay. So one thing. For this work session. Just realizing we have six candidates for the board vacancy. That will be done through an interview process. So a couple of things that we need to do are. One, just make sure, verify that you, which ones you do want to interview, or if you want to interview all. You have that option. Also, kind of going over what questions you want, and then we also need to schedule the interviews. I did give. In your packet here, Lori copied out for you. The first part that has the. Board attributes and experiences, these are the things that we looked at last time we did this process when we interviewed. And selected Bunny. And then at the end of it, other questions to consider are ones that I added in, did a little research, and I thought, kind of, things have changed a bit in the last four years. There are definitely some trends in libraries that we probably want to discuss, so. I gave you a number of them to ponder. So that's, the goal is, this is the process for you to select somebody. So really, what I was trying to do is just free up support with that, but really, it needs to be your process. Cynthia won't be involved in the interviews because the selection has to be made by the board members that will. Be here after the recognition.
She'll be working with.
Yeah, yes. But I thought it'd be very valuable, since you've been through this process with us, to help us. In looking at considerations. So for that, I kind of, I will kind of leave it up to you is where you want to go with this. There's. Mainly, we need to make sure we cover those three areas, looking at the applications, discussing the questions, and scheduling interviews. What order do you want to do that in? I'll leave that up to you.
Do you might have any particular. I guess, wants or desires about how we do go through this process? Anybody think that something is more important?
I remember last time, one of the things we did is we went through the applications and kind of using the. Attributes, the things that were, the first, these things that were listed here, we kind of scored them as to each, and each one of us individually scored them as to how. Strong we felt that candidate was. You didn't, isn't that what we did? You've never done that? Yeah?
We scored them per candidate, or?
We did a point system.
Just kind of, just kind of scored, whether, whether we not, we felt that they, that their application. Fit what we were looking for.
Oh, okay. But we didn't feeling that last time?
Well, yeah, I remember we did it after we interviewed people, but yeah, but.
Because I remember there was a, there were a couple, I remember having conversations about, there were a couple, there was a person that. That we were talking about, and I remember Ray had one feeling about the person, and you and. And you and Martha and I had a different feeling about the person, but we would have had a view of them.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's the question is, do we want to interview everybody, or do we want to score them and only interview the top four, or? Yeah, how do we want to receive?
And that's essentially what I was asking, anybody have any particular desires about how this process goes?
I'm sorry, I'm late, but I recall last time we interviewed everyone. And then we had a scoring, we had a written, and saying. And we also had point scores, rating for each of the questions that we had. And then we scored each individual on the interview as they were interviewed. Not at the end, but as they were interviewed, we could score it. So we weren't biased by anybody. So the last person may get a better score than everybody else does. And then, but we interviewed everyone, unless there's somebody in there that, I mean, we didn't do it last time because we didn't have six applicants. You know, usually we have one, two. And so we had time to do that. With six applicants, it takes quite a bit of time, unless. I hope the idea, if there's somebody in there that absolutely does not fit. And everybody's like, oh, this person just. Totally. Wallboard, not a board, doesn't understand libraries, doesn't understand their community, hasn't been here, they lived here for one month, what are they doing? They're just looking for volunteer activity. Whoa. There are lots of volunteer activities, right? This is the most serious.
And it is, I guess, legal and proper that we just deny someone without interviewing them?
Yes, unless you're doing it for a discriminatory reason, yes.
Right, yeah.
I just noticed this last one on the very back. It said, give the reason why you're a student, serving as a member of the library budget committee.
Oh, I, thank you.
Did she go off to?
She, no, she filled out correctly. We had a glitch in our system that printed out the question wrong.
Okay.
But she answered the question she was supposed to answer.
Okay, yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah, and it's quite irresistible question.
Thank you, I meant to.
Yeah.
Okay, we, I know, we noticed it right when he came in and fixed it.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, do you have your doubts?
Yes, they're right from you.
Under the agenda.
Under the agenda, oh.
Good, thank you.
Does anybody want, I'm grateful, read over the, but. Does anybody have? Any.
I guess, problem with any of the applicants?
Yeah, I just. I think it's marvelous that she's interested, but I have to admit, the one in the back, the one who's only lived here for 10 months. I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, she hasn't lived, lived in Redmond very long. Her answers to her questions were very brief too, so I really couldn't get a. A good feeling about anyway.
Yeah, I think 10 months is a little bit on the short end of residency, since they're supposed to be representing their community, and how long do you need to know something?
Well, and to represent the community and also be a person in the community that. Somebody will know to be able to go and approach, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't know, it just, that is, that was just a concern I have.
It is hard to get into the community, I think, even, even into your, your neighborhood. 12 months. This person is not currently working, but they retired. I don't see any current work.
My concern is, they didn't say they, there are a lot of people who have been here. In the area, long term, they're only moved. Say, Redmond, within the last 10 months, but they've lived in St. Oregon, they've lived in, you know, La fine, they've lived elsewhere. A lot of people had vacation months.
Yeah.
Who come every year.
Yeah.
For the last 20 years. So they do know the area and what's happening. They have to have a better perspective, and they come back every year going, oh my God, what's that?
Yeah.
She doesn't say that.
But it, yeah, it also. Is, if you're a part timer, I think, again, it's very hard to get to know. Redmond, you know, essentially, what did the city council do in. May of last year that would probably affect us, and.
Yeah, I agree.
If you lived here, I think you would. Know that.
Of course, if people live here, I have no idea, that's true.
That's very true.
I think you're right.
That kind of. Think maybe it might be worthwhile for us to look at the attributes that we're looking for, and I would suggest that. I gave this to you as a starting point, if there's anything that you'd like to change, just so that might help in the discussion on the other ones. Because I think some of the things that. That you all mentioned are on here, just making sure that they are.
One. Thing, well. Some of these, under the attributes, are things that I don't expect. Applicants, I think we talked about this last time, that I don't, I wouldn't expect applicants to know, like the Carter model. And, and some, and the questions don't address these attributes. At all, you know, so, so the fact that they didn't address some of these things because they weren't asked about them doesn't show whether they know about it or not.
Yeah.
So. I mean, I would tend to want to just look at these just as like, is this, does this person look like they have adequate qualifications to be considered? And then to make sure that our interview, if these attributes. Then look at the attributes and make sure that the questions that we ask during the interview process really tease out responses to these attributes.
I agree.
And I, I guess, I, my. Thought on this is that. I would say interview the five people without interviewing the Mary Johnson of the person, because I think 10 months is just, I don't know that that's reasonable, and. And all of the other ones seem to.
I guess also because she's been here for such a short period of time. Another reason, she would have a lot to do to catch up, just to understand, I mean, she would have a lot to learn, just coming on the board, I have a lot to learn. But she would have way more, she's, there's a lot of history that we're still. Consuming, going through right at this point in time, and so she would really be struggling to. Catch up with all of that.
Right, yeah, and some of the, I mean, we've got some strong applications here, and so.
There's some very strong.
So I think minimizing, you know, like, really being realistic, and yeah, we could do it as courtesy, but I think, I think going forward with the five. People would, right?
Okay.
Well, I have a little concern on Deborah Nash. What can say, are the reasons you're interested in serving on the library board?
Which one?
Deborah Nash, second to last?
Second to last. Yeah, she would be, she would be the other one that I would, I was a little iffy on, but she had.
Yeah, she had a lot of volunteer activities and stuff, but she looks like she's looking for someplace.
To do, something to do, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. So that's the, that's the only other one that I thought was iffy.
She's lived here since.
Yeah.
2016, so she at least knows.
Right.
In which time?
That I, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
She didn't give us a lot of information here.
And most of her library activities was in wait view, which, I mean, it's fine, but.
Yeah, I assume everybody who applies says use their library.
Yeah.
Where is the library user?
Right.
She has served on a. Couple boards. They're small, but.
Yeah. I mean, literally.
Well, we could start with four and. First four. The first four and, and then expand if we don't feel like we have. We're good. Right.
I'm concerned Tony Oliver. Record names that name, but I'm not sure. That she ran against Cynthia, that's why.
She ran, she ran in May last year.
Okay. Okay. Most of them are. Teachers. They'll move into the teachers. Look. I'm gonna need to start down.
I know in the past, several board members expressed a disdain or concern about having a former librarian. On the board. Or library director. Somebody's retired from that.
Yeah, well, Beth was.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I mean, somebody that. Has a passion for libraries. I don't, I don't think that's a disqualifier at all.
Well, I think being a teacher is. Probably good. Anyone who can tolerate kids in a classroom.
Well, do we want to move ahead with the four candidates?
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but, and everybody is comfortable with the last two. Negating those?
All right, so kind of holding off, and if we. Feel like we need to move forward, then we could, but I think these first four.
First four.
Have great qualifications.
Everybody's in agreement with that?
We didn't have to let them know when the interviews are, and after the interview with them, they say, oh, by the way. Now we're, you know, so many weeks after into the interview process, can you come through?
Well, yeah. I'd say, I'd say if we don't find a good candidate in the first four, then we.
We might have a bigger problem. We could also.
Re-advertise.
Repose them. That would be the right way to do it, I think.
Yeah.
Would that, instead of pulling these?
I would say if I was, it was a hiring process. Easily my brother's idea to just go to the next.
Right.
Go down the list.
Right. Yeah.
And I think you have some strong candidates.
We could invite them to reapply if we need to.
Yes, exactly, right, yes.
Okay.
When it gets time to scheduling, I did have them all let me know their availability. So we can, we can look at that.
Okay.
And will we plan to interview them all in one day?
That's.
The tricky part.
Yeah. You guys get to control your own destiny, so it's, it's what works best for you. Trying to remember how much time we spent on each candidate last time.
I think about an hour.
Yeah.
About an hour.
An hour is about as much time as they can stand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's.
And then there was like half an hour or 15 minutes between cannon, between interviews.
Yeah, so we could.
So we could write.
Well, we kind of scored them then, and then we, I remember we would talk about them after each candidate was.
So it would require about four hours.
Yeah.
At least.
Oh, at least, oh.
Yeah.
I think it's just you're gonna.
If we did it all in one day, I mean, given how hard it is to get people together. If we tried to pick a day.
Morning.
Two in the morning and two in the afternoon.
I thought you were saying do it at two in the morning.
I know, no, that would be fun. How dedicated are you?
I will not be awake at all. Yeah, I've, I've gone through once, we had five or six in one day. I'm a stupid, the good thing about having them all at one time is they're all fresh in our minds.
Right, because it's too easy to say, now, who was that person, like, what was their answer? Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Yeah, I think, Ray, that's a great point. We've done that with interview processes for hiring, and it's. You, you get to the next day, and you're trying to remember who you even saw the day.
Lady in the yellow dress.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go forward with these four, and is there a timeframe that we. Fully that, deadline?
Um.
Cynthia is leaving.
Yeah. Well, this, this will be, we're in our last meeting today, so. So we will need to, well, we would like to get somebody in for by March. Yeah, yeah.
By March. And when is our next meeting, March?
13th.
Thank you.
So that gives us one month. To get them done, okay.
Do you have any trips planned?
Pardon me?
Do you have any trips planned between then and?
I'm working on them, but no. What are, do you have any trips planned to nail them?
No.
And?
You, the three trips?
Possibly. More ski trips, but maybe the snow is, that's probably not gonna happen.
Ray?
No, we're gone in April, April, May.
Okay.
I'm gone for a little bit, April.
Okay.
So that won't affect anything. So we're looking at the next two to three weeks, two weeks maybe?
Yeah.
We don't normally do any reference checks, do we?
One check I did do, which, what you saw. I sent all the candidates' information to the county clerk to verify that they actually. Right, qualify.
Good thing.
Yeah, and they had, it was kind of good, one of them had the wrong precinct, but their correct precinct was in the zone.
Correct.
So, so they're all, they all qualified in that, and. Let me see, the two.
Did you, and you got timing from them on when they would be?
I did, I'm trying to think of, it might be best for. Us to figure out some. I'm trying, I should have, I should have written them all out, I've got them all in separate emails.
Where are they not available? You know, let me see, where are we now?
I'm available. Anytime in the last two weeks of this month. So I'm, I'm available. During this time, the whole time period, I can free myself up.
I'm available. Fundamentally, the week of the 19th would be a little soon, I would think.
Well, no, I mean, if you were, if you applied for something and they said, can you?
And I, and I made sure to, I warned them that. It would be coming anytime, anytime, I said anytime from the 15th on.
Yeah.
I didn't expect us to do it tomorrow, but look at.
Yeah, I'm available like the 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
How about the 23rd? I have a CASA application in the morning of the 23rd.
How about the 22nd?
21st and 22nd are open.
Yeah, I have nothing for the 22nd. Okay?
That worked. 21st. Uh, 21st, 22nd?
If I said, tell us that.
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
Oh. You guys aren't available?
I was.
I don't think we're involved anymore.
I was, I was attempting to take a vacation next week.
But it's so great.
But, but because of that, I have time to mail all stuff. I mean.
Staycation.
Yeah. So. There's a, there's a Wednesday work we need to check on, can somebody check on their mail? Look at this.
Yes. I can, I'm with you. I have my care.
21st or 22nd is fine with me.
On the 22nd.
But we, I know management.
And then the 21st, is that Wednesday, the 22nd, 23rd, 21st, the Wednesday?
So that Wednesday, I know in the morning, but we could talk with Myra, there's a supervisor, so standing meeting in the morning here, but we can talk with her and see if that can be moved to another library. Ranch, or if it's gonna be in Austin.
Okay.
We can adjust. I know that's the morning, I don't know what's in the afternoon, all that too.
Okay.
We give her $10. 20.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we could, she can.
I don't think they have herself wages. So, just see. So, the 21st or 22nd?
Yeah, 21st now, understandable. Let's see what we've got as far as.
Are you moving to Southern boarding, or?
I am.
I'm checking her, we can, we can ensure that.
What's there, is?
My daughter.
My grandmother did.
And I just, we've been thinking about it for a while, we've been looking for houses, but what we were looking for. Everybody kept telling us didn't exist, so, because my husband and I have totally different views on what we want. So, anyway, this house came on the market, my daughter went and looked at it, and she said, Mom. I think you guys need to jump on this, because I don't think this is ever gonna come up again, because it meets, it checks every one of yours and Dad's boxes.
Oh, nice.
That's great.
I went and looked at it, yeah.
Have you closed on her, or which building?
What?
Have you closed on it?
Yeah, the houses, we're all, that, the, the people who own the house, they were deceased, and their, the brothers and the children. Had just been dragging out, trying to get it on the market, and they started at a ridiculous amount, but. So we never even looked at it when it first came on the market, because way out of our price range.
Yeah.
And they kept bringing the price down, and finally they decided, we need to get rid of this.
We don't have to do this.
Kind of jumped on it. It, it came into our curfew, so.
It's Myra and Myra.
Good for you.
Yeah, it's, the thing I wanted, I wanted to live close enough to town where I could walk to the grocery store and library and bank and all of that. But my husband wanted acreage, I'm like. You're 77 years old, I'm 73, why do we need acreage?
I want acres.
Is he part of the United States or something?
It's on an acre, what is, he could, he could live with an acre.
Oh, that'd be simple.
It's on an acre of land?
Yeah, and it's. It, it's, it feels like it's kind of in an open area, feels much more, that's what he wanted, he did not want to end up. He keeps saying, I don't want to end up in a subdivision, I said, you live in a subdivision.
Okay, he doesn't want to be there anymore.
Looks like availability is for all the candidates on the Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
With one just.
Hutchinson Room.
Schedule around.
Okay, and the Hutchinson Room is available all day on the 21st.
Oh.
The boardroom, 73rd.
Which room?
It's in downtown Ben, and it's upstairs, it's, it's like a nice boardroom, like a meeting room.
Oh, that room we used for.
Yeah, that's the room.
In the back.
Yeah, in the back, it's on the south side here.
South side, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we used.
I think we said.
Yeah.
That's good enough.
Kind of, yeah, it's kind of like a.
You like more? No, I think she got, she found on the, on the 21st.
Yeah, we could, we could do it in Hutchinson.
No, no, I just talked to Myra, and she's gonna move, she's got a thing at Myra's classroom, also, everything's good.
Okay.
Myra, uh.
Okay.
Uh, she just booked it. In the morning.
Did you hear that?
Okay, yeah. Okay, so everything's good, then it's okay.
Here, it's a little more open, it's not like.
We can do it here, okay.
Okay.
It's not the Spanish Inquisition.
Um, we'll get Kathy to, yeah, we'll, we'll make her stuff.
And then, uh.
Okay, so, we started a little later, not in a climate.
Yeah, we can.
The wind from then, and then we, sorry, I think Kathy has to.
Can I do a little bit, I can hear it.
But we'll get it from there, we'll follow up later in the second.
When we do nine thirty, 10:30, then 11:00 to 12. 1:02. And 2:30 to 3:00, 3:03, 3:04, would that work?
Can we do?
Later is 3:03.
I was gonna say nine to 10, and then have, say, at least 10 to 10:30 to talk about it, I would think you'd need. Half an hour to discuss, 10:30 to 11:30, and then we could bring it for lunch.
Yeah, I think that's a good schedule, and then one to two. And.
2:30 to 3:00.
2:30 to 3:00, and then have the discussion afterwards.
Yeah, it's 2:30 to 3:30.
3:30, yeah.
Okay, let me get that.
Should we, should we call you at eight o'clock, make sure you're awake?
Yeah.
Set up a coffee or.
Say that.
Not in breakfast, and I'll just roll out.
12:30 for the third interview after, wait.
After two.
Well, I just said one to two, so we wouldn't.
One to two.
Or we could move it up.
No, that's.
That's better. Nine to 10.
Two, two.
10:30 to 11:30.
And have lunch, and then we'll go to one.
And lunch.
So you'll have 90 minutes between. The 11th.
Okay, I love that time.
Yeah.
You're gone either.
And then one to two, and then 2:30 to 3:30.
3:30 to 3:30, and then we discuss.
They just four bucks.
Get us out of. I like that.
Okay, so.
Probably make a decision at that point.
So, that's what I've got, is nine to 10.
Yeah.
Uh, 10:30 to 11:30, take a lunch break, and then. Uh, one to two, and 2:30 to 3:30.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and it will be here at.
It's gonna be this.
Okay.
Uh, 21st. Started.
And we're good for the whole day? I know the EAC was, we have a meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, I, I'll check after this meeting, Myra's gonna be juggling stuff, and then we'll get, make sure that right there.
Okay.
After people get through campus, et cetera. After people get through campus, et cetera.
Do you want, we need, need to go over the questions and then. And about the point that I would suggest is that. Because this is an open meeting. One, we have candidate online right now. Then we share, I think we should share out the questions to the candidates ahead of time.
Sure, yeah, I think that's a good idea, like it allows people.
So everybody has the same ability to air. Which actually. I know when we, when we interview people, we give them the questions mainly because. Uh, we wanted to stop hiring for people that were quick on their feet. And actually learn something about somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, well, well, that was, that I thought would be the hardest part is scheduling everybody, so. Great.
All four candidates can read it that day?
Uh, according to what they gave me.
Okay.
So I will have to go back and verify, there's things may have changed or, but. I want to contact them and make sure.
Okay.
You're gonna go random draw for time? Okay, in order, I, I'll do three, four, five, just randomly do it.
Or let them sign up for which slot they need.
Yeah, I did have one that wasn't available at noon, um, but that doesn't really impact this, so.
Okay.
Yes. I'd actually say. If we had a library in Redmond. I'd suggest we might do that out there because all of them are coming from Redmond. Um, but unfortunately, we don't have that.
So.
Yes. Well, it'll be an important quality of a board member to see if they can make it to this room.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, definitely, I should warn them.
The interview questions, they're down to that, does anybody have objections to any of the questions?
Well, I was just gonna say, I didn't really have objections to the questions, but as Anne said, I do think, I agree with her, I think the attributes and the experience and the competency considerations all have to be addressed. While you guys were scheduling, I went through them and the only ones I found that were not addressed in the questions, at least this was my, when I was doing it, was number three and number twelve. I didn't, I didn't feel like any of the questions really allowed the. Would.
Oh, of the qualities.
That could be, that could be incorporated into three maybe.
Is in which question, in number three?
Yes. Because it's studying issues.
Yeah, that's true.
Attending conferences.
Right, that's true. Yeah, would allow.
And, and I would shorten that. I would say this typically involves. Midday monthly meetings that last between two and four hours and other meetings throughout the year, I would just say the first sentence, and how much time do you anticipate you will have to devote to the board? I mean, they, I'm sure they have checked out, you know.
And you, but you feel that question would actually address number three? I mean, I don't know how, in my, my answering, I don't see.
Well, you're, yeah, that's true.
Well, yeah, but we could incorporate maybe a little more into that, or do you think it needs to be a separate question? And what would you ask, would you ask, are you willing to go to conferences and do research or?
Or you're gonna ask them, how would they? Keep them informed about library trends?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I said, how would you, how would you actually vote? I'll read the newspaper to both of them.
That's a good one, more open ending questions are better than the yes no.
Right.
Kind, yeah.
So how would you rephrase that?
Yeah, I think how would you keep informed about library trends? Yeah, I mean, I, and, and best practices, right? And then what was the other one Cynthia?
Number twelve.
How would you keep informed about library trends and best practices?
Well, that's, I like that, that's more open ended.
Yeah.
For me, because I think that's a really, number twelve's a really important one. To understand, to understand that, that the roles are totally different.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, to me, seven, I would strike number seven. Because anybody that. Is gonna be on the board is gonna have to learn how we operate, and I mean, Carver model is, that's something no one knows about, you know, so.
Yeah.
So I think, knowing what the role of the board is versus staff. That, that is what the crucial thing is, that they are willing to. Participate on a board level, not a, not a manager level.
Right, and each. I mean, you could have been on different boards, on, on this one and another one, and the boards are totally different as far as what our responsibilities are. So just because you've been on, on another board or, or serving, doesn't mean you know how this operates.
Yeah, school boards and library boards, and city councils too in a way, kind of. They need to understand that there's a role, a specific role.
Was there a question on here though? I can't find how it said, um, what do you think is the role of the board?
Yeah, under, yeah, there is one.
Question number four.
Right.
Oh yeah, what is the role?
And then.
That might be open.
Under, are we?
I, I was, sorry, I was opening the document. Statement you made just before this, there was one you wanted to strike or?
Seven, number seven.
Number seven, you wanna take that out?
Yeah.
Okay.
How long?
And I, I would like to add one then, under attributes. You know, I was thinking about what are the things that we really wanna. Find out about these people. And to me, the whole. One of the attributes I would like is demonstrates a commitment to and knowledge of intellectual freedom issues. Because, and we, and we need a question about that, I think that that's super important, especially in today's.
At this point in time, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I had asked, talked about that earlier, so.
And the other, the other area that I think is missing from this is any kind of, um, DEI.
Questions to consider, there is one.
Right, but under the attributes, I mean, I think that's an important attribute also. Demonstrates commitment to and knowledge of. DEI issues.
Can you say that again?
Demonstrates commitment to and knowledge of DEI issues, or how, I don't know whether that's the right way to say it, or.
So what, two you added?
Pardon me?
Intellectual freedom and DEI.
Yeah, oh, do you want to put those together, I would kind of.
I know, I, no, I think they're totally separate.
What was your statement around intellectual freedom?
Demonstrates commitment to and ino- knowledge of DEI issues.
But intellectual freedom, what was?
Oh, uh, same thing with intellectual freedom issues, I mean, I didn't know.
Is that gonna be a question or is that just?
Those are attributes, those are attributes, and then we need to reflect those in questions, yeah.
So I added those two attributes, did you take them one away?
So seven, seven.
Number seven.
Oh, the demonstrate, okay, sorry, I forgot a question.
Don't take the seven away, the question is the attribute.
Got it, sorry.
And will, um, these attributes and experience go out to the candidates also?
They shouldn't, no.
No, they should be.
They shouldn't, but we have a board member, I mean, a potential board member online, so as we discussed.
And you've got to figure that out.
Yeah.
Well, my, my take on that is, how can a person know to demonstrate intellectual freedom when, when they may not even know that truth?
Well, number one, that's, that's part of the interview. That's part of the question. We will ask the question.
It's the base foundation of libraries, so, yeah, they need to understand it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
But that doesn't come along until the actual interview, what they're saying is, if I was a candidate and I knew you were. Concerned about intellectual freedom and DEI.
They will know that because they will receive the question about.
And the question, you're right, okay.
Yeah, well, the question about the attributes, I didn't realize the candidate was online.
Yeah, but we've only discussed.
We know, so I think we have to give all of them.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's what happened.
Why it's just the question from the first one, so.
So all the attributes and categories have to go within it.
Yeah.
What was the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, that's. Okay, this is welcome to us, crazy.
Right.
That's true.
I don't agree with that at all, that seeming the attributes.
I mean, then.
You don't want to give them the answers?
Well, I will say that we're not, I didn't post them anywhere, so.
Yeah. Well, I, I would be okay with not giving them the attributes, speaking of.
We're addressing them in the question.
We're addressing them in the question.
And that's gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, they'll get an idea, if somebody asks about something, they know they should have an opinion about it.
Other attribute, except for those two, and those two are both questions.
Right.
So I think we're okay.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think.
Well, I think we, we'd still have to give them, the ones who would just discuss the attributes, we have to give those to the other candidates, ad- attributes.
Well.
Yeah, because.
And one of them.
But it's their choice to have zoomed in on their meeting or not.
Well, but it is a public meeting, since one of the candidates has zoomed in.
But, yeah, they're.
The reality is, it's a public meeting, somebody can come watch and report it too.
Right.
And they can watch it recorded.
Right.
So we should let it know that it's recorded, we have access to it.
Yeah.
And Todd, Todd can let everyone know that, when he sends out the meeting notice, maybe.
Yeah, that's a good idea, okay, yeah, that, yeah, eliminates the problem.
Yeah, okay, they can listen to the real.
And the question, let's see. Uh, where is the question in there that would be specifically about intellectual freedom?
I forgot to add it here, but it was, Lynn had a good one, how do you think libraries should handle censorship, censorship challenges?
I think that's a, that's a great question.
That's a softball question.
No, it isn't really. That's a what question?
It's a softball, I mean, they're gonna say we don't censor. You're not gonna have anybody come by and says, well, libraries should. Should have some more censor requests.
Well, I know, but there's lots of, there's lots of different ways to handle that, you could say, well, we could move the book, or we could put the books in a special section. Or we could restrict access to the book to only certain age groups.
Options.
There's options.
Well, that's not censorship, so we're adding a question, how do you, how do you, how would you?
What was the question again?
Yeah, but how would you?
Say that question, say what.
I have Todd, I.
Uh, how do you think libraries should handle censorship challenges?
Well, how, uh, book challenges, let's say book challenges.
Okay, yeah.
Or because.
But Indiana.
Censorship and. Yeah, I know, but that's.
If you read the definition of censorship, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's putting things behind, where someone has to ask, where you hide them, where you don't purchase them on purpose. That's all of the censorship, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you add both of them, they handle censorship and book challenges.
I wouldn't use the word censorship at all.
Well, does, does, would book challenges work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got, we got censorship piece.
We could do it that way.
That works.
I mean, it is a super hot topic, I just have, I think, what an hour and a half, moving to Senate bill.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, well, yeah, no, I, it's not that I don't agree with you, I'm just saying wording of the question.
Yeah.
But I think that's, for me personally, that's a theory.
Because it's a softer ask, and so if they go to censorship, then we know that they understand the issue.
Sure, yeah.
If they don't go to censorship, that says something too. What's the cause of the civil war?
So that's not a sample.
Just saying.
What do you think about? What's that, ask the question, what do you think about being about women?
Okay, so, um, and we've also got, how would you keep informed about library trends and best practices, right, under the questions? Todd?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
What, it was, say again.
Where are you?
So we're new.
Well, there was one that we talked about adding, how would you keep informed about library trends and best practices? That was one that, in the attributes.
And the question is, you took out number three as it exists and substituted this one.
No, I didn't take out, well, I mean, actually, I wouldn't mind taking out number three, I mean, I would, I would agree, yeah, let's just take out.
As an attribute?
As an attribute.
No, as a question.
A question, okay.
But, you guys, number three, the question is, how would you stay informed about library trends and best practices, the question. Are you taking out number three of the attribute?
No, we're taking out number three of the question, and, and we're, and we're adding, how would you keep informed about library trends and best?
But her number three, don't you want to know that these people, I mean, somebody could have a full-time job, I can't come to a meeting on Wednesday. In, for four hours.
We have a good question, usually at the interview, yeah, and just say, and, and that's like, you can, it, it's a lighter question, but it's an important one, but just saying, we meet. This number of hours a month or throughout the year, does that work for you, and our meetings tend to be at this time, does that work for you, and you can get it there. Instead of taking it to.
And that's just like a, yeah.
Kind of a follow up.
I'm not, just kind of.
And Todd has to.
Well, I was gonna, this will open a can of worms, so I'm just planting the seed.
Yes.
And that is, I did some research, and we are basically one of the only government agencies that does not meet after hours. Which, which I feel is a diversity, equity, inclusion issue, not just for excluding people that want to be on the board, but our community that may want to be involved in our. Meeting process, may want to sit in on meetings, um, so really, I think, we don't have to tackle that today, but I think it's one. Uh, that we should address, and, and may reflect in the candidates we're getting for board applications.
Right, and I, and I really, I said that the, from the beginning, that when I got on the board, is I think it's a huge. Ac- accessibility issue for a lot of people, because if we want working people to be involved in what's going on in their public libraries, we give them virtually no opportunity. Um, and so, I think, I think it's something that we need to discuss. As a board, when we get a new person on and just say, when do we want to meet, and just have a discussion on that, yeah.
Well, I, I know when, um, I was talking to a couple of people in Redmond, just saying, you know, I want you to know my position's open, and they were involved in the community. And most of them said, Cynthia, I can't, it's crazy, you guys meet in the middle of the day, I can't do that, so it really does, it, it num- it limits the people.
Limits the pool for sure, and like, so, just as a, for instance, like, what if we decided we wanted to have a student representative on? Board, you know, and they wouldn't be able to come because it'll be during school, or even a COCC or OSU student, you know. Or, you know, and they wouldn't be able to come because it'll be during school, or even a COCC or OSU student, you know?
Good, good.
So, like I said, I opened the can of worms, we should put a pin in that. Come back to that, but, uh, okay, so you were talking about changing question number three, service on the board, as far as the significant amount of time for meetings, that we're thinking of just checking on their availability at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Like we do in normal interviews.
Okay.
At the end or the begin?
At the end, we usually do that.
Yeah, okay.
We have, we always do, I don't have a question, and then, yeah.
I was looking at questions seven and eight, I'm jumping ahead, but they don't, they don't really seem to be that different. Can't they be looked together somehow or other, at least to me, I'm not seeing.
Right.
Difference between them.
Well, and, and. Yeah, I had to say.
Seven and eight.
I mean, when answering those, I think I'd end up basically saying the same thing.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I would, I, yeah, eliminating one of those might be good.
Because I'd like to see number D in the other questions to consider, I'd like to see it moved up.
Yeah, that was one I had circled.
Right.
A definite. So, so do we like seven or eight better?
Well, can you combine them?
Well, yeah, you can combine them, yeah.
Reword it so that.
Yeah, well, yeah, we could just combine them, okay.
Couldn't you just put them together?
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, okay. Yeah, so that takes care of that, and then, um.
And you wanted to back in.
D wasn't that, oh, I thought, no, that was an attribute, we didn't add a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think. I think C.
Yeah, let's see.
D and E are all really good questions.
I like F too.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
But maybe it can be.
They're, they're way more open in the, yeah.
Maybe that one could be tied somehow or other into, um, as another one.
I kind of like the, um, also E, that how our public library is changing. We've all experienced that, we're building a new library and rearranging the other libraries.
Do you think F?
And I, I think that, like.
Yes.
Maybe they need to have a knowledge of that.
Can we eliminate five and substitute? Oh, you said yeah. Yes.
Or, or somehow they're.
Well, or E.
Somehow they're put, add F into.
Well, I, I don't want to get the questions.
I.
Too complicated.
I think five is better replaced by.
E is what I was.
The.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct.
And I'm attempting to edit while I'm doing this, and so my numbering system is completely off, so.
Yeah, right.
And I'm taking this to know where it is, take some little double check.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna attempt to print this out for us to, to take a look at what we decided.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Uh, so, so we're suggesting taking five out.
Yeah.
I remember thinking so, with E.
Yes, so re, reworded. Uh, and E is, how are public libraries changing, how can the board expedite?
Yeah, I like that, I like it better.
Um, actually, one question I may have is, hmm, you could probably just take out, how would the board expedite it? Yeah, in just that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's good. I like that. Okay.
So we want to say, how are public libraries changing, and, uh, do you feel, do you feel has addressed these changes? Is that appropriate yet?
Well, I'm more interested in, I mean, we've done what we've done, so what are they interested in? I mean, this is future oriented, so what, what, what are the things that they would like to see done in the future?
You are always, by the way, welcome to ask follow-up questions from the given answer.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Kind of misinterpreted the question, or.
Right.
And you, and you were curious about something more.
Questions for their case, their question, yeah.
I like C, but I think it can be incorporated into another question, or do you sense a follow-up?
Okay, so how about combining that with E?
Yeah.
How are li, public library changes, and what do you, do you think are the most important issues?
Yeah.
Those two would.
Yeah.
Okay. A great line.
I think I have mine in this court.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps.
Okay. And then, I think adding D.
Okay.
Yes.
Just adding D as it is?
Mm-hmm.
I think so too. I think that's definitely an important question.
Already added, um, oh, apparently we had added intellectual freedom in there.
No, we know, we still need to come up with a question on that.
So, yeah, okay, yeah, I have the, how, as a placeholder, I have, how do you think libraries should handle book challenges?
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. No, that was. Okay. I like that a lot.
Would it be important to add a question, what makes our mission meaningful to you in number one somehow? Why are you interested in becoming a member of the library board? Or are those two?
That, that actually, my thought in throwing that question in, because I saw it on a number of board ones.
Yeah.
Is that's a more relevant question than why do you want to be a board?
I agree, because, and then we understand that they truly know what our mission is.
Yeah, they have actually.
Yeah, okay, that's good, yeah.
I think that's true.
Say that again.
So, replacing with the number one, why are you interested in becoming a member of the library board? What, what makes our mission meaningful to you?
Well, or combining those two, I think combining those two.
Actually, we already asked why they want to be a member of the board in their written application.
Right, oh, that's good too.
You're like, we didn't need to ask.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, I was.
But Ray, what's it like?
Our mission, what makes the mission meaningful?
That's another, eh, what makes our mission meaningful, so it would, I like that question, because then they need to understand specifically our mission at this library, you know, yeah, so it's not, it, it sees that they're doing some research and digging and understanding the work that we need.
But they're gonna have the question.
Mm-hmm.
So is anybody gonna come back and say, well, not meaningful?
Well, no, it's like, what aspects of it do you find or do you resonate with you?
If it's, if they don't, then their description of why it isn't should be helpful to.
Yeah, like, what are we missing then?
Like, you know, is it personally meaningful because I wanted to have volunteer work, or is it like, I want to serve my community? There's a difference in those answers, one, they're self-centered, and one can be more.
But would it make a difference?
I think it would, yeah.
It would to me.
To understand where you're coming from.
I think, I think what it does, it also just gives you a fuller picture of, of their, of their thinking, their process, maybe their values.
Well, and I think it also gives you an idea, have you read them, do you know them?
Yeah.
And that's important, yeah.
They're giving a question, or they're gonna read the answer, um.
Uh, you're objecting to.
I'm not, I'm wondering, there's another way to get, what are we trying to get from this question? What's, what is it we're trying to find out?
What, what their motivations are on kind of a philosophical level for wanting to be on the board, and, and how they view the place of libraries and society and the value of libraries, and what specifically about our mission means the most to them.
Why don't we ask them, what do you think the mission of library should be?
Well, because we're not asking them to come, we're asking them to join our mission, not come up with a whole new mission statement.
And, and if, if they come back with, you know, if they're looking specifically like for a mission statement, and they say, well, I don't know specifically what your mission is, then you could move on to, you could reword it as just saying, you know, going back to this one, well, explain your interest in why you want to join the library board. But if, if it's a person who's been following anything about what's happening in the library, they know, I mean, they could bring up, you know, a lot of things that have been happening in the library, and would be knowledgeable of that. I mean, I, I think you'd want somebody on the board who's knowledgeable of what's going on in our country.
Let's, again, we know why they're interested, because they've already told us.
Right.
Why they're interested.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I like that question, yeah, I do too.
We can't assume they're.
So I, right now, I'm ten questions. That's a bit. It's about what we had, we had nine before, yeah. Actually, I have, I have ten with a bonus of other availabilities.
Well, and I, and I would also add that conflict of interest, I think that's an important question from a legality standpoint. Um, and, and, and maybe do that at the end also, to say, do you have any, you know, just as a double check, and in the future, we should add that question to the questions, to the application. Because that's important, I mean, we ask members of the foundation that, we have, we are asked that on the state library board. Um, we need to know whether people have entanglements that make them unsuitable as board member.
And are people going to willingly say that? If you have a conflict of interest, why would they apply in the first place, I guess, my question?
Well, or then, the potential, the potential, like, so like, I've been on boards, I've been on, if, you may not always have a conflict of interest, but like, if something comes up, then you would back.
Recuse yourself.
Recuse yourself.
Yeah.
And if you're thinking about it ahead of time, then, you know, it's just kind of be more, you know, open.
I don't think, I've never sat in an interview where somebody said, yes, I have a conflict of interest. Usually, they think conflict of interest really is, you or your family members or anybody associated with you, places you work, you receive the benefit from you being on the board. Well, monetarily, not much. So, there's not, I've never seen a hearing where somebody said, oh, why do I have Supreme Court hearings? They have that conflict of interest, they just lie. And as far as recusing yourself, the person being asked to be, to be recused is the one who decides if they're accused. So it's kind of like, are you going to say, yeah, I have a conflict, and I'll recuse myself, or you're gonna say, no, no, I'm not recusing, so, perfectly open minded.
Yeah, but I, I'd like to know, like, for instance, if, um, somebody's, um, spouse was like a contractor for some important service for the library, I would want to know that, just so that everybody has that knowledge. So, so, yeah, I mean, does that make sense?
That would come in a specific incident, but like, that would come in a specific incident.
Right, but I mean, at least it would be on the table, at least it would be on the table.
Yeah, during the discussion of, say, a contract.
Right.
Right, but not in an interview.
Well, just to, just to. Well, because.
Does it?
To me, that would come up as new projects or some, you know, are, are introduced, but to come right out at the beginning, I couldn't think of what conflict there, there might be in, as an important.
But I agree with you, if, if that question would, I, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't know of any conflicts.
Yeah, like, like, if, you know, if my husband owns a contracting company, or if.
Yeah, I mean, there's, but I, with all the building projects and everything.
Yeah, like, like, I'm married to Greg Holton, or, you know, like, that would be something that people would want to know, right?
But wouldn't that come up, as Anne was saying, wouldn't that come up? I mean, if all of a sudden, something came up, and I, we were dealing with a, a business that my husband was part of, wouldn't it be, wouldn't that be the time when I would say that?
Well, what, say, what if, okay, so what if I'm married to somebody who works for Southwest Builders, and we're asked to approve costing grease for Southwest Builders, as an example?
But how would we, how would, how would you as an applicant know that?
Well.
Have any knowledge of that?
Or what if it is my aunt?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, it's a specific incident.
Or what if we have a higher.
Talking into the difference between accusing yourself of a decision, and saying you have a potential conflict of interest for being on board. Very different questions, and to ask somebody, do you have, would you ever have a conflict of interest being on this board? Whoa.
How do I?
Okay. Well, that's not appropriate question, there's no answer to that, the answer, of course, is no. Though I'd say, if it was my aunt. What, there's who it is. Because I would be their employee. I think, I think the rest of the board might have a concern. If, if you were employed by your aunt? No, if, if my aunt applies to be on the library board. Your aunt's, uh-huh. Then you as a board should know that before you appoint. That's not a potential conflict of interest though.
It's a huge conflict of interest.
That's a hundred percent conflict of interest. That's an ethism, but we don't hire the board, we don't hire or apply anybody except you. So the board has no influence over.
But we are selecting a board member.
Yeah, but what monetary or, or potential gain do they have?
Well, we decide on, on salary and all that, and that's.
That's, that's given. I don't, I'm not pushing for this one way or the other, I'm just, it's, it's, at some point, as a board, we should be aware of any potential conflicts of interest.
I ain't sure of that, but I don't think, I, I, I don't see it being important, I mean, if I was an applicant, I would answer that question going, well, at this point in time, I don't know, I can't think of any, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of like when they ask me, are you allergic to such and such, well, I haven't been up until this point.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and I, there's so much, there's so many moving parts on the, on the, that the library deals with, that I don't think that a one, that one person sitting there could answer that question with, without the knowledge of what, what they do.
Who are our contractors, or who, who do they, is there something in our, in that book over there, our, um, what do we call them? The policy, inner policies about conflict of interest?
Yes, oh, sure.
So if it's a policy that you must notify the board if you have a conflict of interest, seems like that's covered.
As a contractor.
You could do it like that.
Yeah, so, contracting rules rule our passes, if we have a conflict of interest, we have to declare it, we're gonna have to recuse ourselves.
And, and, well, that's true, and.
That's a weird.
It, um, maybe that's something that we need to make sure that we cover that particular policy a little more often. As we begin to hire more contractors.
Well, I know one of the things that, when I came on the board, and then when you came on the board, we were each given a section of the manual to explain to you, and so that's, that, that, I think maybe just to highlight that section when the person comes on the board, so that the.
True point. Yeah. So you're gonna type these up, or we're gonna get them back now, and? Yeah, so right now. One, and each one of these questions was worth ten points. There'd be a hundred possible points. I didn't put any point value on the last question that was available. Yeah, that was a bad one. Okay, uh, so let me print this out. And then we go, wait a minute.
Yeah, I think reading them all in one place would be helpful.
I'm not sure if my notes really reflect.
That's exactly why I wanted to print this out, so we can kind of, and please do not assume that I got everything.
Do you want me to go get them, are you printing them?
Um, yes, I have, yeah, the code is there, I got a code on it.
Oh, you know, it's.
You'd have to, it, it's gonna take me longer to explain to you.
You, you go do it, Todd.
Thank you.
I think I would leave some of these other questions healthy. Very sweet.
Yeah, is it great, Lauren?
Are we, we're not, no, because he's just going to give.
I think, I thought it was a weapon. It was heavy.
The cookie, yeah.
A New Year's present.
It is dragon.
Dragon, anybody multiple of twelve? Anybody here eighty-four?
Oh, yes.
No?
Close, but, or.
My daughter's here.
Seventy, seventy. Seventy-two.
Oh, I will be seventy-two.
Is it still snowing?
It's snowing here. Really coming down.
It has arrived.
Let's move along here.
I thought I told Bonnie, just, Bonnie, just go.
I know there's no lines that are all linked around, we were in the high stage for a while.
You guys are actually colder than we were.
Yeah.
That would be nice. I could change, no, it's fine, but that ice was, it's like horrible.
And it was trying, it was like forty, like negative nine, right?
I saw, yeah.
As long as my snow blower fires up, it's just half bad. Snow will melt as quickly.
Yeah, well behaved snow is whatever. If it stays where it's supposed to stay.
Yeah, our toes are kids, they're all crazy for.
After the ice and says, crazy.
I think it's just called.
Oh, much, yeah. And then they guilted, get your anniversary, and it was raining. And it was like, and they said, we're out, it should be nice on the ride way. And I thought, well, yeah, better show I'm cheap.
And the South Bay Center is great for her. I've been there for lunch.
Yeah.
I've been there since Marcelo, or owned by, so, all the same. Oh. Marcelo's daughter.
Yes. Somehow, I lost the page.
I think I'm gonna see if they're open. Yeah. So they're open.
Oh, I didn't get in there, the, how would you keep informed about library trends and best practices?
Yeah, it's number seven.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I think we, um, we might want to reorganize these a little bit.
Yes.
Because they're kind of all over the place. Future, what? So let's see. Okay, I have a, I have a. I have a, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
Uh, wait. Okay. How about? To start them off with kind of a getting started, more softball question. Please describe the public service community involvement and tell you what skills and, tell us what skills and expertise you have for it. So number two would become number one. Then, what makes our mission meaningful to you? Based on your understanding, what is the role of the board? How would you balance the needs of the individual communities in the library system as a whole?
Number six.
Number six. Then, uh, what is an effective way to come to a decision when there are different viewpoints? Then, getting into kind of like the, the future. Uh, then go to number nine, how are public libraries changing? And how would you keep informed about library trends and best practices? And then divert the equity and inclusion question is book challenge question.
Where did you put book challenges then?
At the very end.
At the very.
You know, where did you put?
Are you?
Four? Yes, number four would become number s. Okay, so it would be, the numbering would be.
Two, three, four.
One. Number one would be question two.
Okay.
Number two would be question one. Number three would remain question three. Number six would become question four. Number five would be five. Number nine would become six. Uh, number seven would become seven. Then, we would have question.
Number four.
Where did number four go?
Oh, no, uh. Number, and then number four would become eight.
Okay.
Number eight would become nine, and number ten would remain ten. How about that? So it kind of gets them from the function of the board to then, um, and, and what the work that they would be doing as a board member into what the board's role is on current issues and how they would keep currenting.
So it goes from more personal to, say, countywide to US?
Well, to, yeah, to, to, yeah, yeah. So I think that's a little less whipsawish, yeah. And then you need to add your number ten.
Or eleven.
No, no, I meant ten points for each on the ends of each.
Because number eleven is about their time.
Right.
About, yeah, that was just a general, I think. And that's more of a tie to, I suppose, to know that.
Yeah, and, and just, if you don't have the time to serve on the board, then none of these answers.
Yeah, we understand. Thank you.
Do you recommend nine be low two?
Nine would be number six.
So six of nine for it.
Now, number six is question four.
I've got it marked up, you want me to print that out?
Yeah.
I think these questions are better. I mean, they get, some of the other ones were sort of like, yeah.
I think they're getting refined as well.
We left Bonnie off easy.
Thank you. I remember it was all Zoomed, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because it was.
No, that's true, that's sad.
I was trying to think, I, I don't remember coming in here, and how did I forget this? And then I remembered it was all in Zoom.
Well, we hired the last state librarian all on Zoom, which was like, it was really hard. It's like, you mean, we're not gonna meet these people in person?
Yeah.
And it turned out to be great. I mean, like, we had a great state librarian, so.
My son was a, um, he was part of a company, a startup company, and, um, he was in the sales, which was vastly important to the startup company. And during COVID, I think they expanded their sales probably a thousand percent.
Wow.
And at one point, he had only met in person, I think, one or two. Because they're scattered around the west.
Right.
And, but he had done it all on Zoom.
Wow, it's kind of scary, though.
Yeah.
Some advantages of, yeah, electronic programs.
Changed a lot.
Our son-in-law works at Apple, he's now in promotion to a point where he has a large group. We have a weekly meeting, it's a good thing we have Zoom.
Yeah.
There's so many people out there in China. It's normal, I try and get everybody together.
Would be expensive, too.
Also fortunate, jet lag, unbelievable.
I remember when we installed video conferencing systems, which is like the recursor, and God, they were just outrageously expensive. They were so expensive to install, that you had to have all the acoustics in the room. But it saved thousands and thousands of dollars in plane fares.
I did it on purpose because I was worried about. We only have eight other colors back there, so.
And I think sending these questions out does give each candidate an opportunity to get to know the library better.
Which I think will just provide an opportunity more thoughtful in their responses. Like I said, thought instead of, you know, very difficult thing for being able to put some timing accurate, it's gonna be really good. Yeah, no, I think that is great. I think the potential for another of that. Yeah.
It's a good preview of coming in for actually, just at one, right?
Speaking of which, I, I'll have to research it. We had the same issue when we did it with you. Because technically, another person could have, candidate could have watched your interview.
I think they did. They're not a candidate, but, um, somebody from the outside can do not well in the board.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah, but as far as I have seen with.
That's interesting. I hadn't thought about that.
Executive session, that's not covered under executive sessions.
And so interviewing, uh, each candidate would be an executive session?
No.
No, it's not. It's not. It's, it's just an interesting, I mean, it makes sense. As, as a community member, if I'm interested in the running of this board,
Right.
hiding that piece would be a big chunk, but it makes it difficult when you're trying to be fair to everybody and.
Like, who goes first?
Yeah.
And, and the other four could be watching.
Watching, it gives them an advantage, for sure.
Okay, well, thank you. I think we've got everything we needed from this. Would you need time for you to get some lunch before we walk? Unless you have anything else?
So we just do the waiting, ten, 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 everything? Pretty much. Are they more critically important than you?
We have a lunch currently.
Oh, we have it, actually.
Yes, as soon as they're got.
I'm a linger, this special work session.